Any further discussion on any of this agenda? Blaine, is your...
I'm up already.
You're up.
Okay, well, I'm here with Ross Naylor as well. We both were here a few weeks ago and a couple of weeks ago and presented, you know, Health Plan Choice for you. And we've been asked to come back to answer some questions. So I'm here to take questions, I guess.
One question I always got to ask when you're dental planning. The way that we understand it, there's $1,500 cap on dental. Now, what about braces for one of their children or something? You take the one-time $1,500 cap for braces?
Is it one-time or any?
So the $1,500 annual maximum does not include the orthodontia? The orthodontia is a separate thing. It's a $1,500 lifetime plan. But it's separate from the regular dental, which you get $1,500 every year.
Do you guys kind of think age out, so it's 26?
For dental.
What about with the arts?
With the arts, yes.
For everything of the time?
Yeah.
Is that the age when someone ages out?
That's our interest. Yeah, as a matter of fact, yeah.
And the other question we had was the, at retirement time, the 105, the Health Choice pays, OPH and W pays that same thing, the statute that still pays towards the retirement insurance, so...
And we help make sure that that goes through. And you guys get that.
So that's actually OTAs, your retirement system that pays that. And we work with OTAs just like the state plan does. So your retirees will pay the lesser amount every month and will collect the difference from OTAs.
I know the word there, you have to roll over.
Yeah, no change.
No change, okay.
And if somebody is, well, like I've got a girl in my office that she has to go to the ER once every six weeks, I think, and gets shots in her eyes. This is something that will carry over? She's not going to be, you know, losing her coverage on that?
There is no pre-existing exclusions for anything anymore as far as the Affordable Care Act.
Nothing, no matter what condition.
Exactly. That's a federal law. No one can...
I had a question. I had an employee ask me, they are not on our Health Choice. They're on, they have the life insurance, but they are not on our health plan. Can they get on OPH and W? And does that employee, does OPH and W have to be their primary then?
If they work here, it will become their primary.
That's what I told them. I know with Health Choice, your insurance is your primary, so there's no way her getting out of it being her primary in there.
You can't have two.
Of course you can't.
Well, you would pay two deductibles and do everything.
Right, yeah. Well, she, well, she is on her husband's insurance and that is her primary insurance right now because that's her only insurance. And she wants to maintain that because of some health issues.
Sure, so we use the Coordination of Benefits provision. So this would become a primary and then any out-of-pocket costs that were left over then would go through.
But there's no way that she can keep the other as her primary? That's what she's asking.
No.
And that's what I'd say, so that's what I would ask.
So your other would be her secondary.
And if she comes on at this point, are there restrictions as far as pre-existing, even though she wasn't on it before?
No.
So is this life insurance too, or is this only health?
No.
So it'll be, take the place of everything that we have right now?
There isn't a primary and secondary health. Sorry, a life, so...
So if we added our spouse to health or life, would it be just like your new employee?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean...
Because I never did put my spouse on this.
You have the same option period and, yeah, you can add him.
So the, I remember, because like when I was a new employee, it was like, you have to put him on now, or it's, you can't really add him later, or it's weird.
Oh, no, you can add him anytime.
You can add him anytime without any...
They're an option period, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is like another option period when you join our plan. But the group life also includes automatically coverage on your spouse, no additional costs to you. So that, you'll get that automatically. If you wanted to pick up additional life volume, then you could do that during the retirement.
And you can go to a training provider that you can use to go...
Yeah, we use the Blue Cross and Blue Shield Network. It's the largest network in the state, deepest discounts. And it's hard to go out of the network here. And you can do it, but it's difficult. We already checked all your major providers around here and they're all in there. You know, you know what the health exchange is, right, under the Affordable Care Act? Blue Cross are the only plans offered through that. No other company offers it. So by default, you have to have a large and strong network. It's just to be able to offer those type of things.
I don't think we ever asked before, but what kind of turnaround, I mean, we have option periods that will be starting next month. I mean, they'll be sending the packets out. Are we still planning ahead of time? When is our crunch time? When do we have to...
You don't have to make a decision at any time. You can go through option period, you can start a new plan year with Health Choice. All you have to do is give them 60 days notice.
60 days notice.
So you can leave at any time, just for the sake of not putting your employees through the process more than once, I would suggest.
To do it at that option period?
Yeah, that's entirely up to you. Now, don't forget, our plan year is July 1st to June 30th.
Right. That will help tremendously during budget.
So our option period is actually April and May. So they'll have to do that anyway.
Now, I know once before, I'm sorry, I can read this. Once before, you had told us, when we had looked into it, you know, since, well, I guess it won't matter because we're going into January. Everybody was starting out with deductibles anyway, so we were looking at before going into July and you guys would go and work with us on our deductibles, but going into January, we'll have brand-new deductibles, so...
And what we can do, though, is, because if you start in January and then ours resets in July, what we can do is not reset you, so you effectively get 18 months instead of 12 months.
Okay.
Otherwise, your employees would get a short six-month window.
Right.
Everything would reset and that would be unfair. So we'll, we'll do that.
So do other, oh, sorry. Wait, no.
Yeah, go on.
Do other counties have this code?
Oh, yeah.
Thirty of the 77 counties are on this plan right now. And this plan was created by counties for counties. It's a public trust. It's actually owned by those who participate in it. So this is not a private health insurance company. It's a public trust. So our board is made up of county elected officials and other elected officials from municipalities and stuff.
They have their communities, at the ACO building on their corner.
ACO.
And I can go down there to the...
And Woods County are on this plan, Garfield County are on this plan, Grant County.
Grant County.
Yeah. So some of the ones right around you here are on it already.
So is there any procedures or anything that you don't cover? I mean, some policies used to not cover pregnancy. I mean, this...
You know, what we did stop covering is trepanin, where they drill a hole in your head so you let the evil spirits out.
So like karyotic surgery, is that what you're talking about?
We do cover it, but you have to go through certain procedure, a set procedure to make sure that you're a good candidate for it and conform to certain guidelines before that will be allowed to, to occur. Otherwise, you can create yourself a big problem. And I'll be completely honest, I'll tell you where the biggest issue will be when you join our plan.
How's it going?
Because there's always going to be one, right? So when you use RX and you go to get prescriptions filled, there are a number of RXs out there that have quantity or age limitations, or have to require a physician's authorization, or step therapy, like you might have tried and failed at this before you go on to these things. So when you join our plan, we're not going to know which of your employees are taking a drug that might conform to one of those things. The only way we're going to find that out is when they go to get their script filled for the first time and it gets denied. So we'll pre-warn you now. What we're not going to do is make your employees jump through those steps again. If you're on a drug and you're stable on it, you should continue on it. We're not going to force you back through those processes. So pick up the phone, call us while you're still in the pharmacy. You can put an override in and you can walk out with your script. What we'll do is give you payroll staffers that will explain that point to all your employees as well, so they're pre-warmed. You guys are aware that that's going to be a sticking point, because we don't want you day one to think, oh, this is really bad insurance, right? So that's going to be the major issue. But we've got an easy solution. Pick up the phone, we'll sort it out.
Do you still, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, what about co-pays and, or medications and, well, doctor business? You know, that, what they pay?
Exactly what the best... $10 for generics, 45 for preferred brand, 60 for non-preferred brand. You take a specialty, $10 for a generic, $60 for a non-preferred, $100 for, sorry, $60 for preferred, $100 for non-preferred.
That's what we pay away.
That's what you pay. Unless you're on a specific specialty drug, which is, and you participate in the co-pay systems program, then you'll pay a lesser amount. Although some of those specialty brands, it gives a little less $5. So it all depends. But what it will do you is, that's all less than you're paying there. Plus, we have a number of drugs that we cover at no cost. Insulin in January will come $25, not 45. Over-the-counter antihistamines with a prescription of $5, oh, yeah, $5, okay. Over-the-counter, uh, reflux medications are free with our plan and their support as well. What I'll easily tell you is, when you compare us to Health Choice, you'll pay less and you'll get more. I don't know, just exactly. Yeah, that's it.
What is it saying, Cammy?
Didn't she ask a question on the coping of the doctor? She said medicine and doctor.
Right, so primary care helps, this is $20. Urgent care, $20. Specialty, $50. Unless you use our virtual primary care, in which case that's free.
Ooh, yes.
What about emergency room?
Emergency room.
Let's say the doctor, 20.
It's a $50 co-pay unless you get admitted. It goes to the emergency room.
Or if it's for an emergency. So if you go use an ER for a non-emergency, there's a $50 deductible. Otherwise, it gets waived. If you break a leg or you're, or gash, we're not going to charge you extra gas. It's meant to prevent you using ER like a body. Sorry, was there another question?
Nope, she got me.
I had a question about pharmacy. Do you still have to go through steps to get certain drug, level drug? Like my daughter was trying to use an acne medicine and we had to go through some weird pharmacy to get drugs she wanted because it was so crazy expensive. And we had to check, to go, had to try different, certain different ones and prove that it worked. Maybe you guys still, are you...
So that's what I was sort of about, with the step therapies? Where you step through a process? If you've already gone through that process, we're not going to make you do it again. There are certain drugs that are expensive, specialty drugs, which you're going to need to get through the specialty pharmacy. They get delivered to your home, okay? But for the vast majority of drugs, like all the major chains, all the local pharmacies, we'll be able to fill those scripts. Is that answered your question?
So pretty much the same way we do now?
Yeah.
All the major chains, pharmacies, or local pharmacy also, because it's just...
Yeah, we checked it already. We already checked it already. In fact, we actually use the same PBM Pharmacy Benefit Manager as Health Choice, which is Express Scripts. So whichever pharmacies you're using now, guaranteed, they're going to be in the same category.
We just made an investment for, but like with my middle child having his tonsils out, they had surgery centers, so all it cost me was a $50 co-pay for the specialist. I didn't pay anything to have his tonsils removed. Do you have things like that with your coverage?
We have some of that stuff in place now. In July, we're about to roll out a program where certain, if you go to certain facilities that will directly do, for certain things, for certain major things, you'll have no out-of-pocket cost. We'll waive all the co-pays and deductives and co-joys as well.
Because that was really handy.
Sure. Yeah, that will be starting in July, with the final pieces together on that.
And it still goes up to the first $3,000 on us. We pay the first 80% of, or 20% of the first $3,000.
Firstly, pay your deductible, it's $750. Then you pay 20% of claims up to a total of, with the deductible, of $3,000.
And you think you all pick it up now?
Yeah, we pick up 100% after. I'm sure there's going to be many more questions. There's lots of details to this. Everyone has a specific point. For those of you that weren't here when we stopped by last night, we've already talked about MD Life, a free virtual primary care. That also uncovers pediatrics. That also includes psychiatric and counseling services through the phone or through, you know, including dealing with workplace issues too, so have complaints with the doctors. But the other major thing that I think's worth pointing out is, we use, we have a service called ConnectDME, where you can get your medical equipment, so your CPAP machines, knee braces, wheelchairs, walkers, any of those things, free. Free delivery, no cost to you, free setup and training in your own, if that's necessary. If you can use a CPAP or BiPAP machine, free supplies, so tubing, masks, filters, whatever, as often as is necessary.
I think it's three, two modes now? We pay 20%, isn't that right, Ray?
After deductible too. Yes, it's subject to deductible and current rates. No, you can still use any vendor you like and you'll pay the same amount with us, but if you use our ConnectDME service, it won't cost you.
Just a question out of curiosity, are you just Oklahoma?
Yes.
What happens if on a vacation, someone else stays?
Good luck to you. No, no.
Hope you're ready, Mike, we can get ready.
No, you can get coverage anywhere.
Does it just work like it is not out of network, basically?
Well, a lot of times, if you go to a Blue Cross provider, it's going to be in-network coverage.
I mean, out of state.
Even if you're out of state. And so anywhere in the country, even if you're in Europe or South America, if you ever see a suitcase with BPO written on it, on any doctor or hospital, you're going to get in-network coverage through our plan.
Okay.
So just to clarify, say somebody's child gets injured and they call a helicopter and they come to pick the child up. And instead of flying them to Oklahoma City, the winds are more favorable for them to go to Wichita, so they take that child to Wichita. Then that employee's not going to get stuck with a $120,000.
That's a great question. And I've got a real-world example of that exactly happening, with a little caveat here, that this individual was unconscious at the time and so was not able to make decisions. They actually life-flighted him to two or three trauma centers before they could accept him. He ended in an out-of-network trauma center. This is where the difference with this plan comes from other health insurance companies. They got a big bill for that. They took it to the board. The board said, "That's unreasonable, we'll cover it." And they paid it as an in-network claim. The member's liability was minimal. I think the plan paid $140,000 on it. And so they triggered the whole claim, even the trauma center as an in-network claim.
Well, you know, even if you are conscious and you tell them, "No, I want to go to the city," they're going to take you where they think you need to go, whether, whether or not, your idea or not.
So this health plan works differently in that way. You know, in that we're not a full-profit organization and we're owned by those that participate, so we take reasonable, sensible decisions on these things, which you're not going to get in that type of exception taken with your current plan. And that's not just happening once. Those lifelights, I've met in the last seven, eight years, at least four instances where that's happened.
When I worked for SandRidge, I had Blue Cross Blue Shield. And when I stepped down to Health Choice at the big stadium, so how does this compare to what SandRidge has got? Is it basically the same thing, or is there any difference?
There is a difference in that we rent the Blue Cross network. So this isn't just the standard Blue Cross plan. In fact, if you go directly to Blue Cross, you won't be able to get this plan, because RRX is with Express Scripts, not with Blue Cross, because Blue Cross can't do the things that we need to do with prescriptions. We're a lot more benefit-rich than you're going to find in any plan with Blue Cross for it. So...
It's like a custom plan.
It is, yeah. So we, we build the benefits and the plan design, and we rent their network and they adjudicate claims on us. That's really where the big issue is.
What kind of cost are we looking at for employees plus spouse plus children?
We left all those details there, but every tier is a savings, considerable savings. And we go to the county of full cost analysis, they'll be saving tens of thousands.
So again, my son lives in Fayetteville. I go there, I have a heart issue. You're going to cover me if I've got to go to the hospital.
Yeah, if it's, if it's in the Blue Cross network, yeah. Even if it's not, you'll get in-network coverage and, sorry, out-of-network coverage. And out-of-network coverage with us, I think with, with Health Choice, you pay 50% of your out-of-network coinsurance. Here, you only pay 30%. So even if you do get out-of-network, it's a costly mess.
And if it's unreasonable, then we take it to the board and say, "We believe this is unreasonable. I was on vacation in Fayetteville, Arkansas, I had a heart issue."
Yep.
Okay.
And the best way to do this, if you know people in the neighboring counties that are on the plan, talk to them, see what they think. Grant County, they've been on this plan since 92. You know, you don't hang around that long if it's not good, right? It's a long time in your own place. Also, in the last 10 years, we've got three years where we had no rate increases. How many other insurance plans have you had?
How much were you saving in total?
Over $50,000. It is close to $55,000. It's, I've been saving for the county, and we want to make sure that you're paying the same pay.
Plus the virtual RX.
Yeah. I'm just reading.
Yeah, there's really good additional benefits of this plan.
Well, just being on the Blue Cross network, and you might be able to speak to this just a little bit too. There are a lot of extra benefits that just go along with being on the Blue Cross, that they have discounts on many different things, freebies, things that are interactive, that you can get on and find out more about healthy living from that, all the way through, they have a, I'm going to call it kind of an early motherhood kind of program that you can get on from the time, early pregnancy all the way to six weeks post-birth, that they can help walk you through all kinds of different things, whether you're feeling good, feeling bad, you know, different things are happening, things are happening with your new baby, and it's, and it's all free. You know, you just, it's a phone call or, you know, or web, web apps or FaceTime and they, they, you know, just little things like that, that turn into kind of big things for certain people. So...
So are you the rep for this area?
I'm the rep for the, for those.
Is there any way that...
I'm not really the rep, I'm the...
Do you have reps or...
I'm the...
So is there any way that you can come to my board and talk to these guys individually?
Yeah.
If they have any questions?
Yes, you can.
Do you guys work with American Fidelity?
That is good, because I've got three, three employees that have questions.
I want them to get their questions answered and make them feel comfortable.
This is a big decision, because it affects a lot of people, literally retired people. And we want to make the right choice, understood.
With the retirees, we will work with them one-on-one. We will either call them or we'll organize a meeting out here in Canton, because each one of them is unique in what products we're going to place there. So they don't just have one plan they have.
Under 65 retirees, nothing changes. They're, they're just going to stay the same. Once they turn 65 and they go on the Medicare Advantage, then that's where we can come in individually, follow them, and get them on the right plan. There's multiple out there. So same, same thing with your partner.
If he comes and talks to the Cherokee people, we should make it open to, like, all the people in the courthouse that aren't on here.
We want to, we want to save him all the time.
Yeah, because, you know, like my two deputies and maybe yours and the rest of them.
And I'd be better just to have me, like, have the Marlins kind of out of the world.
Yeah.
I will say, I will say one thing on this. We have no problem in talking to all the employees with this caveat. Because of HIPAA, we don't want to get into specific health issues on an individual in an open forum. It's just too big of a problem to share that sort of stuff with your coworkers. And also, when you're dealing with specific costs with one provider, unless we put that claim through under Blue Cross and know what the discount with the contract with Blue Cross is, we're not going to be able to give you absolute dollar figures of, okay, how much would this x-ray of cost and, or so on. So as long as we understand that, then I don't think we'll have an issue.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you for having us back out here. Whenever you want to get together, I'll shoot you an email this afternoon. You'll find a date.
I think all three of them would like to meet at this. And if we could court that together, so you don't have to make...
Yeah, well, we just meet up there.
Everybody just meet up there.
Like, early in the morning before, you know, because, yeah, we used to go out to farms at four or five in the morning before they'd go out to start their...
Well, we can do it during work.
[laughter]
He doesn't like that, but...
I don't know that my deputies are going to want to go out there.
Hey, I've done meetings at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning in the jail, with prisoners walking around the room.
We can arrange that, Rick's ahead.
I'll give you a little story. I was actually at the county and I won't tell you that name of it. And doing an enrollment meeting and the whole sheriff's department came and two guys escaped the jail, because they didn't leave anyone there.
Wow.
Wow.
Witness, yeah.
So probably just give contact to somebody here.
Yeah, that's your thing. We can set up a time today and it doesn't have to be on Monday, pretty much any day.
Yeah, Mondays are not very good.
Yeah. And I'll tell you what we'll do also, is, as we talked about last night, when you join this plan, you get a point contact with our office. So whenever you call, you always talk to that one individual, so you can build a relationship with ours. And we'll bring out that person to that event, so you can start...
That'll be, that'll be, they'll be talking to you.
Yeah. We'll have a face-to-face.
I request not a Wednesday morning.
I agree with that.
Court day.
Court day on Wednesday, huh?
So we can do that in a couple of ways. We can run through the presentation that we gave you before, which I think will probably be the best course, and then open up to questions, instead of just fielding questions. That way, we'll probably better cover a lot of the disgusting...
The generic, the general, or somebody can get a specific question to ask.
Specific questions, yeah, definitely, just not specific health questions, right?
What's your total on your out-of-pocket insurance?
Max out-of-pocket is $3,000. $6,000 for a family, which is less than...
That's what I...
Does the policy max out?
There is no lifetime or plan you max, is the question.
What I was getting at, say you got three or four kids plus a wife, is it still just the total of $6,000 and it's not for individuals?
That's right. That's less than the current plan.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we max out at two times. I think Health Choice is three times.
You pay for each kid?
Is it still just a total of six thousand? It's not per individual?
That's right. That's less than the current. Yeah, we max out at two times. I think HealthRice is three times.
You pay for each kid?
Out-of-pocket or...
No, no, for your premium.
Oh, no, no, no. So we have a child and children, right? So whether you've got two or ten kids. You've got ten kids and you're all helping, yeah, right?
They get extra counseling.
Yeah, extra free counseling.
Well, they do have, that's one of the major things with parenting.
Teach you how this happens.
So what are the rules to be on insurance? Can stepkids be on there?
Five, it's not speed.
Stepkids are fine. Any child that you have a legal guardianship over. So a lot of times aunts or grandparents now are adding as sole parent or parent for that person. They're entitled to be on the plan. We also will cover disabled dependents over the age of twenty-six for life. As long as the parent is on the plan, so they don't age out at twenty-six. You continue to be able to...
Run that by me again. You don't, you're not going to go out at forty-six if they're already on?
So if you have a dependent who has a permanent disability, let's say Down Syndrome, for example, then they don't have to be at twenty-six.
Then stay on as long as you want.
Any more grade?
I'm sure you're thinking some more.
Thank you, and you can contact who you want.
It takes me a third.
Yeah, we got to narrow down the...
Yeah.
My mom changed this one.
I'm with the four bucks.
Four bucks?
There's the donuts out up in the fourth.
Getting the rails on you.
I don't have a donut shot.
Let's not buy donuts.
Then where are you going to buy donuts?
Yeah.
Here you go. Let's settle, but it's not, they're not...
Oh, if you're united, no.
Bring some apples.
Great.
Here we go. Well, we three, you all selling.
Go into my office and give us two.
Oh, it's the first card. Just the ones that you want to take. Well, and I changed my phone number since I was here last.
Oh, that's how you... Here's a card, but it won't work that soon.
Well, what I found was that to both a company that I was with, their world, Oklahoma government, really isn't that well. And so I can change theirs and they could, they could not switch my number.
I was at half point.
I bought some...
They gave us...
I had T-Mobile when they gave me an employee phone number when they first put me on. And those phone numbers can never be, can never be T-Mobile. They actually, and I was on it for more than five years. They're going to just disable that number altogether. They won't be cycle or anything.
Thank you, son. Yellow phone number. Wish you a fine. Says, "I am not your secretary." But, oh...
That's funny.
Oh, my God. I didn't say that a day for a year. I'm trying to figure out where that number gets out filed. My office will do it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, go out and then back in, next door.
Next door.
Yeah.
Please, I don't take... You need to look this over or something like that.
We can continue if you want to look at it.
Yeah.
You want to, please. Call it bids.
Yeah. Leave me to count. We'll get it out of here.
Happy to, Jay. I appreciate it, my boy.
You're the only one.
You know that maturity of that...
Make that training company.
That's the guy. Being a mother.
Okay. They've got a price list attached, so...
Should have to read. This is for cold, pain and heart. Are you familiar?
You've got news? Here we go. All last measures.
Is it different?
No, it's the same. Now they just put their things together, which is already on file. Well, we've got a lot of things coming out of the oil pretty. There's a lot of cases to do this time. Either one of them will have done them. They both do the job. So I hope someone can go with, move it along the way.
I'll show move to the hill below it. Pretty. All set. Call the paper.
Aye.
We'll be contacting... I just want those all officers. I'm sure.
Let's do like a pick-up and no, we want to decide.
Just one from last year. Oh, man.
Look at that. It's all... Yeah.
Do you want to tell them the story, Aaron, about Summit?
Yeah, I'm still getting emails.
Yeah, I'm still getting emails. I'm so sorry.
I haven't opened them because I don't want to change my password again.
Right.
But I, they want an email. They probably want to hear it. He says, "Please, please send us an email."
I haven't gotten any. I've gotten the ones that Marcy has ordered.
I didn't give them your email. I just gave them my number. So I don't know whether to, I need to talk to Jim and see if he wants me to forward this. Or have, I don't want to deal with him. He said, "Just leave him." Yeah, anyways, our salesman's email got hacked and so I began...
From Summit, from the truck that we just paid for.
Yeah. And they sent me an email saying that they're being, going through an audit and that the only way for payment was going to have to be through direct deposit or...
A wire.
A wire, wire transfer. And so, you know, I forwarded it off to Marcy. And Marcy called me. He says, "They're not going to do wire transfer." I was like, "Well, just buy..." Anyways, the next week I got another one. "When do we expect payment?" I was like, "Man, Jim, you're awful. Why is she here?" And so I replied back, said, "For our conversation, the meeting is on Monday, the sixteenth or whatever." And as far as a wire transfer, here's the name and number that you can call and discuss about that. I says, "Otherwise, you're going to get a check." And then come to find out, it's all, he wasn't getting any of my replies.
Oh.
He had no contact. He didn't know what was going on. So I'm glad that...
He opened it and said, "I'll check out, I'll check this out for the DA and the sheriff."
Yeah, well, they've got the FBI is involved in it because somebody paid.
Yeah, I'm sure it's a large amount.
Yeah.
So it's over a large amount, then it goes straight to the VA. Very situation.
Well, I think Marcy said that an FBI agent called the town.
Yeah, that's what she said. Yeah, she said, "Don't... Don't expect... Don't check out if one calls. It's not fun at all." It's crazy.
That's the problem.
Can I see this? Can I step to the other one? Just individually, yeah. Individual POs getting there.
No, it's just, it's just brush guard, prelim and stuff. It's, it's...
I have babies, kids, and...
It's hard right out. And it's just, it's all plastic metal. It's just not protectionable. Actually, art is supposed to come around here. But I couldn't do a alert. Yeah, art is high. A rat runner, left his finger. For it and stuff. Support the local business, support the local, everything we have to buy and protect on. So that's all. You guys, right? There's a clause in here, Terms of Payment, pushing that due upon completion. It's also got fifty percent of the fire bodies paid for within thirty days of contract signing. Deducted three thousand seven hundred dollars.
As long as they send us an invoice that, um, so much of the bed is done. You guys verify with us that that is done. Yeah, but they'll have to send us a separate invoice. And we don't, we don't do the payroll, but they send it originally to the.
They're starting to do that.
And they can still pay their payroll based on how their sales tax is.
Hey, every one of these trucks.
We're too close on there, just, we just keep on saying.
They tried, but they wanted to go on the. Who wants the clause?
They're all for the same.
You gotta make our favorable somehow.
Those delivery charges.
I, you know, it's too late now, or it ain't.
Well, you still need to go see it.
I gotta go before it pays, so I can drive. It looks nice, driving by. It's basically thirty or forty mile an hour.
That's why I buy your socks.
Nice feet down there.
A couple of speed bumps in there.
We did, they had, they had the road dug up, but they had it closed.
Get one and you land on the second.
They didn't put a big old pile of gravel in there, so that's down it does. Time to get to that, it's.
Well, that took.
Yeah, a block. You want to take it?
Speed or five minutes?
Yeah, I hope so. Eventually they better.
Far away. God, he makes some smart comments out of it all day. Better get my mouth shut.
I'm looking, check even all once for a baby. All the baby?
Aye.
Oh, that's good, that. It's good. It's suitable. I'm going to look at it. Being a burden, it's hard to show, but it's very bad. Officer, all in favor?
I'll give them the notice, and I'll put a note in there also that they just sent us on that one. I hope you guys are all right with this.
All right, yeah, I'll have to, I'll call Mike if they're, when they're on to.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me get first.
The sheriff just acknowledged it, and all the, the manager, I need to sign that.
Yeah, well, I'll go up here.
Is the sheriff done, sign up?
If they know, I'd be, I'm starting to read. Make the motion. Take it. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, God. Get out of order. That was my.
Two, two.
My, I get scared. Why you there? Yeah. Resolution concerning red inspection response to about local government. Of compliance with the national red inspection standard. This means that we're going to see you leave, cause we always say it.
It's the whole. I want something bigger than this one, shoot it.
Yes, I'm.
No, 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 just the top. Just all of them. This is their example.
Oh.
Don't make motion on the resolution.
Second.
This is an example, which is this one. I've re-typed it.
Oh.
This one says.
Got a giant one on that?
No, this one says example, but.
Oh, okay.
I can give it to you.
This was supposed to be the original.
Well, it says example at the top, so you don't read.
I didn't read that.
What, the next one?
This one doesn't say example.
That one doesn't say example.
Well, let's turn this one up.
That would be good.
Well, I guess what he was trying on it. I'm not really scared of it. Flip that through the means.
Second.
Red duty, red, all in favor?
Okay, so which option, are you choosing CED number one? Okay.
Make the motion.
Jay made a motion, I saw it.
Update on red tradition, you were saving off the rest for nine to ten.
Wait, I already had Stan and Jay on this already. Should we already make the motion?
Could be.
Do we need to change it?
On what?
On this.
Well, yeah.
No, uh, so it's Jay and Stan?
That's what I had wrote down already. You need to change it, that's fine.
That's all right. That was on this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just an example, how you do it.
Okay, that's, I'm gonna do this. I just printed everybody one off for what we have right now. If somebody wants to make changes, then. One for next to Elsa. Want to make changes? There you go, that's what was done for. And effective July one, we signed this on June seventeen.
Your only table is until next time.
You don't have to make any changes on it. If you want to make changes on it, you can notify me at any time.
We can make changes.
Yeah, you can do it anytime.
I was just asked to change something, and when I tried to call, they said, no, they didn't want to change. So I figured on the agenda that anybody at that time wanted to make a change, they could.
I only want to change just the third one, okay?
Right, and that's, we've done that earlier in a previous meeting when Thomas let Quentin come on. And I just made a change on mine, so I can keep an updated list. And Quentin's on here anymore.
Take my name off, careful and put Stan on, so we don't have to worry about that.
Sam, Sam's already on there, so he can be twice.
I was saying, my name.
It was open, yeah. It's open. It's open, yeah? So, I mean, no action has to be taken on it unless somebody wants to change.
Yeah, there's no action. See, your name's before mine, so you gotta do it all at the same time.
No, Jay's name is already on there, so it's easier just to change one, it's like answers.
No action, huh?
Yeah.
Oklahoma Federal Lands Access Program grant for District Three. Playing that, can we, Marvin, or Anita, or?
Where is fiber?
Nobody gives me any fiber.
No, we're trying to get federal money to Texas, Christopher.
Oh, okay, good.
Any grants, anytime you have fiber grants, which was the meeting, so.
So that's what it's, that's all we're doing.
Yeah.
So you're gonna apply for it.
Well, where we're at now, we've got all the paperwork done, and they're working with us, and we're working with them. So we'll put it in.
What, what does a grant mount to you, Tom, and say, if you're being?
Well, we didn't ask for a full amount, because, uh, other counties have just asked for some. It seems like they can get some every year. Do the one full amount, maybe just do that year, and it'd be like one point two million. So you're only gonna get two miles done, one mile done. But if you just get a little bit, then you can do one mile this year, one mile that year.
Good.
Is that through FEMA?
No, nothing to do with FEMA.
Who's it, who's it through?
The Refuge.
Refuge, okay.
Good, they need to take in all that thing.
Well.
And go to.
And they want to, they want to help, but, you know, nobody talks to them, and, and so we, we got involved with them. See what we do, if we don't, at least we tried.
Yeah. See, I tried out there to be shack, and one was chip and see, and of course, they were broke and out, and I think they didn't have anything.
Well, this is kind of a grant deal. I mean, it's not like it's coming out of their pocket, it's, it's, it's something for all counties.
So can other districts apply for that, if they have?
Yeah, they have, they use it.
So who's your contact?
Uh, we talked to, uh, Shane.
Bart, uh, what's his last name?
Kason. Kason.
Kason?
Am I right? It was a chain, yeah. We've talked to a whole bunch of people.
Do the grants have to be matched? Some counting?
It's twenty percent.
The match is twenty percent? And that can be probably used up in, in kind, which would be like ours that.
We haven't made money yet, eh?
No, we, we gotta come up twenty percent of the money.
Okay, it's, a lot of, some grants will let you do the work that you actually put forth in it. Like with the FEMA stuff too, you can put, apply that towards that twenty, like in the hazard mitigation.
In kind services.
In kind services, so I don't know, maybe you'll learn more about that later, but maybe it doesn't, maybe it's a flat match.
No, 'cause we're doing all the shoulder work and stuff, and that, that, that applies to that.
Okay, 'cause twenty.
I'm moving here to accept that.
Second.
I'll say, I. Appointment is needed in MedCap to act on property for.
Black.
I'm a person. What does it mean by the word acting?
That's how it was put to me.
Okay, well.
He just wanted on the agenda to make you guys aware of it.
Maybe there, maybe he just wants to try it or something, I don't know, that word acting conduct.
I wasn't there with them.
I think with Neil, his situation is, is, uh, he won't be a year until October. He's, he's right at the mark where he's in that probation period, so.
Oh, I was the chairman on the Fire Department.
Yes, sir.
For a year before that agreement.
Yes, sir, so he's.
So he's acting now, and then probably October.
Until that is passed and they can.
Well, he, he'll make good fire chief, that's all I'm saying. Uh, I think he'll work out good. You made the merger, I'll check this, uh, all the favor. I, I. Young for senior business.
We need payroll, um, this Monday we'll have to approve it soon as soon as they can do it again.
The Monday.
So we'll have to approve it Monday. I need it before Monday.
Yeah, yeah, wait, you are.
Because the thirtieth is on a Monday, and, um, the meeting isn't until ten o'clock, and it'll be in the bank at eight o'clock, so we have to do this before Monday.
All right, yeah, it's like, keep an eye here. I'm moving with you, I'll sort it all better.